He said it's conference. Monday all day.
Unplug.
Dr. Nation.
That's your supply.
Said.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April seventeenth meeting of the East Tenfield Township Board of Supervisors. Sorry for the little bit of a delay that we had tonight. Need to announce that we had an executive session to discuss a legal matter that began at six twenty this evening and ended at seven oh five. With that, I'll call the meeting to order with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, because we got started a little early, late this evening, we'll do away with the canned statement and just say that this meeting is been designed for in person and is being recorded. We'll have. Just a second here. Yeah, it's being broadcast on Zoom, Robert's rules will apply and our public comment policy will also apply this evening. With that, we'll begin with the consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion, or deliberation. Consent agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of our meeting. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the board?
None.
No.
See?
The abstaining from item E.
Okay. All right. Any comment on the consent agenda from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to present, to approve the consent agenda for items A through D.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a, I have a motion from Mr. Russell and a second for Mr. Johnson to approve the consent agenda, A through, let's see, A through D as presented.
So moved.
I think, I don't think we needed that, we had to do over here, sorry, okay. All right, I think all we need is a vote at this point, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Okay. Well, a motion to approve, I'll accept the motion to approve item E invoices as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker, motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four, zero with one abstention.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brubaker, are you abstaining from that? Motion?
Brubaker?
For the invoices?
No, I was.
Should he have?
Yes.
I'm not aware that I need to.
There is an invoice in there.
Oh, okay, then I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
So that's three.
Three, zero, two. Right. Still passes. Okay, we'll go with action items now. First up is one ninety-eight Chickies Road. Waiver of preliminary plan request, Mrs. Switzer.
Turn that over to the engineer.
Okay.
Supervisors.
Come in.
And if you could talk close to the microphone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And indicate your name for the minutes.
So my name is Ryan Trees with RGS Associates, the design consultant for the sketch plan of one ninety-eight Chickies Road.
Is that mic wrong? He's very hard to hear.
It was. It is. Yep, just pull it up.
I'll restate my name, my name is Ryan Trees with RGS Associates, the design consultant for the one ninety-eight Chickies Road sketch plan that was submitted. The last, last week, we attended the planning commission meeting for requests to recommend waiver of preliminary planning and to process not only a sketch plan, but then a final plan. So we're here tonight asking for action on that item. The applicant is Evercore Facility Management. That their entity owns the one ninety-eight Chickies Road property as is being pulled up on the screen here for our rendering. The property is fully in the enterprise zoning district and the permitted business use that we are proposing is the contractor business and storage. So the, the building that you see there on the plan is approximately nine thousand nine hundred seventy-five square feet, intended to be used for mainly warehouse space, but it is a two-story building to house also office space. You'll notice in the eastern portion of the site, there is a loading dock to, to service that warehouse space as well as parking for trucks and trailers for Evercore Facility Management Business. It might be difficult to see at this, this scale, but there is a fenced in or fence showing the, the eastern portion of that parking enclosed for security reasons. There are two access points and two gates, one that's on Chickies Road on the east as well as internal and is also called out on the plan. Now, there is also parking for employees on the west side that provides twenty spaces. As far as zoning goes, there is some screening on the southern end. We were at the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three zoning hearing board to request a variance of section two oh seven dash four point thirteen related to landscaping. We did get approval of that variance for, with the conditions that on the west, north, and east sides of the property, we would eliminate the twenty-foot requirement for screening. And then the second condition would be this, on the southern side of the property to have a variance allow ten feet instead of the twenty-foot requirement. So again, that, that is the, the general synopsis of the proposed plan. We are asking for further action on our request for waiving the preliminary plan process. So if there's any questions, I will prepare to ask and I will do my best answer.
Any questions from the board?
None.
No.
Okay, hearing none, staff have any issues, Mrs. Switzer?
No.
No, we're, we're fine. Any questions from the audience?
Patty Clark, thirty-three, thirty-seven, Cochran Drive. Just, just wondered if, if you could provide an explanation, and I know that I've been at meetings before where this has been done waiving the preliminary plans, but could you please explain that again, what that actually means and why a company would be requesting something like that?
Okay, so the municipal plan code requires a two-step process for plan reviews, a preliminary stage, and a final plan stage. Primarily, the preliminary stage is used for what we would call phase development, typically residential development, where it's going to be built out over a multi-year period of time. And so they'll develop an overall project for the site, that'd be the preliminary plan. And then they would then develop individual phases and they do final plans for each phase. Because the municipal plan code is not a true one-size-fits-all, when you get into a lot like this, that's just a single phase of development, a rather simple land development process, pretty much every property owner in the past has come forward to request the waiving of that preliminary phase, it doesn't relieve them of any of the requirements of the ordinance, it just eliminates a bunch of unnecessary steps that they'd have to go through by going through and getting a preliminary plan approved and then turn back around and get a final plan approved, which is pretty much the same thing that was in the preliminary plan. So it just knocks out a couple months in the process and knocks out a lot of administrative fees and stuff like that that they really don't need to pay. And we have historically in this board, in this type of situation, approved this type of request because it does not anyway restrict the township's ability to regularly enforce its ordinance.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from the audience? Okay, hearing none. I'll hear a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver request for one ninety-eight South Chickies Road project, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker, motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, carries five, zero.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have a Holland Street project.
Good evening, Kevin Ember from R2, also here with me tonight is Mike Redonia, representing the applicant and Jeff Herr, who is the, the realtor for the potential site. So I'll wait for Diane to bring up the, the image, but we're here tonight for a very similar request of a preliminary plan waiver for development of five Holland Street, which is actually also in close proximity to the last plan that was just presented. As you go east along Chickies Road, that turns into Holland Street, which dead ends at, at the subject property as far as the township right-of-way that we are looking at. So what we are proposing as an introduction to the project tonight is the existing parcel is about twenty-nine acres. Do you have the, the plan to? It's twenty-nine acres in the, the enterprise zone, it's part owned by Klein Services right now. So approximately four acres of the property is planned to be subdivided off, remain in, in use by the current client's operation for their sanitary facilities. And then the, the approximate twenty-five acres east of that would be proposed to be developed as to two car dealerships. Those would be operated independently on a potential lease parcel is what we're looking at right now. So that, that parcel there is mostly open field vacant area right now. There is a, a stream tributary which runs parallel to two eighty-three along the, the northern portion of the site. And the railroad obviously runs to the, the rear of the property along the southern portion of the site. There are some potential traffic improvements that we've started analyzing as a result of the, the proposed development here. Thank you. So kind of see in concept here, we've been coordinating with the traffic engineer for the two eighty-three Commerce Hub project, which I'm sure you're aware is on the, the west side of, of Spooky Nook Road and they're a little further along in the, the planning process. So additional potential improvements that we would be looking at as part of our project would be a traffic light at the intersection of Spooky Nook and Chickies Road, which we have had initial conversations on with township staff. And then also a eastbound, eastbound right turn lane on the, the exit ramp to two eighty-three, which is not currently proposed as part of the other improvements as part of the two eighty-three Commerce Hub. We'd also be looking at a potential emergency access through this point here. So part of this is already paved through another parcel that is owned by Klein. And then we would be extending a driveway through our site, through this portion here for potential emergency services if there would ever be an event where that could not be accessed through this portion of the property. As mentioned, there, there'd be two potential car dealerships proposed, up to fifty thousand square feet each with, that would include both sales and service facilities. We're still working through potential architecture of exactly how that would, would look, but a maximum of two stories for those buildings. As mentioned here, there, there is a existing tributary to Chickies Creek, which runs through the site that is not currently within a FEMA floodplain zone. So we've delineated a floodplain as part of our initial analysis of the project. There, there's a, a small wetland finger, which also comes in, as you can see here, from a culvert that goes under the railroad, so we'd be analyzing that for a crossing at this point. And then incorporating any changes to that, that floodplain line into our proposed design and analysis as we would go into land development. Just to mention, as far as utilities, there is public sewer and water available for connection in this area. And, and for stormwater, we're currently evaluating two potential approaches. One would be more of a traditional approach with underground and surface facilities throughout the lot to control stormwater runoff. A second approach we're analyzing, similar to what was done on, on the Brookside Development and Penn State Health, would be handling some of that stormwater volume and rate control within the floodplain area through a stream restoration and riparian buffer installation. So we, we'll be further reviewing those as we continue through the land development process. So as mentioned, we're here tonight just to introduce the project, see if the board has any questions and then also request, since this is not proposed to be a phased development, waiver of that preliminary plan to go right to final plan and submit the land development plan with all those requirements.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I got just one, since, since you introduced the project and it's a little bit more complex, I do got probably two asks, one, the north alley from Wood Alley on, is there any way we can make that private since this is going to be an emergency access from that point on? Just clean up our township right-of-way a little bit. And the second one is if we can do the floodplain restoration, that would be really preferred. If we incorporate that and that has really gone well with the township, it's a good environmental feature. So it's just, it's just a, a good gesture if we can do that, it would be appreciated.
Anything else from the board?
I would just echo what Mr. Russell had to say, especially the second part of that.
For sure. Anything else from the board?
Good.
No.
Okay. Staff's okay on this, engineering's, we have the approval there, anything from the, from the audience? All right, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plan waiver request for five Holland Street project, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Russell, all those in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. Thank you. Okay, thank you, good luck. Dorsey Road Stormpipe Repair, I think we'll go to Mrs. Switzer.
So we had our second meeting with the residents to further vent the two options that were presented to the board at the last meeting. Those were the swale option or the piping option. The residents and the, the group that met still favored the, the piping method, but what we're proposing to do is a shorter pipe by about twenty-five or thirty feet and then also beefing up the area where the outfall is to improve or slow down as much as we can of that water coming down through that ditch. We feel the cost will still stay in about the same as the estimate from the engineer, about forty-one thousand, confirmed that with him. We're looking for authorization from the board to move forward. There is a, a map in there.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I think our stormwater management group has done a good job on this. Any questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion to authorize staff to move forward with the project, which involves removal of trees and stormpipe replacement on Dorsey Road.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Brubaker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson, a motion from Mr. Brubaker, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. Okay. Next up on our action items is speed hump replacement on Bar Boulevard. And after some discussion at traffic this evening, Traffic Commission is recommending that a, a new speed analysis be done by the, the chief before we take any additional action on this at, at this time. So any questions or comments from the board?
We don't actually need to take action.
We don't need to, no. No, we don't need to really do anything here tonight on this item, except I guess table it because it's on the, do we need to table it or not?
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll, I'll hear a motion to table the speed hump replacement on Bar Boulevard this evening.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth, a motion from Mr. Johnson and a second from Mr. Wigglesworth, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. Next up, we have the appointment of our Township General Counsel. We're changing our council and moving to Apple and Yost and Z LLP with Susan Pfeifer as our main contact. Mrs. Switzer, we really don't need to say much about this.
No, Mrs. Pfeifer.
Susan.
Yeah.
We appreciate the service that she's been providing us. That said, I'll hear a motion to appoint our Township General Counsel, Apple, Yost, and Z LLP with Susan Pfeifer as our main contact and general counsel.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Chair. Okay, second from Mr. Brubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. All right, next up, we have a PPL grant of right-of-way for utility line for a monopole installation at the Four Seasons Golf Course.
So F and G are, are kind of related, are related together, but they are separate action items. The Four Seasons, under the direction of the Recreation Authority and the oversight of the, the board, have determined that a monopole tower should be erected on the golf course property in the location of basically the fourteenth tee, which is the backside of the golf course, closest to Nissley Road. You can see on the print there, the, the sender, and then there, there's an access drive coming off of the gardens from Nissley Road. What you have before you is a PPL grant of right-of-way to allow the utility to run a line along that access drive to the monopole location. And the second action item is Verizon's need to have a right-of-way to actually install the antenna.
Okay, thank you, any questions from the board? On the right-of-way? Any questions from the audience?
Just one quick question, this has nothing to do with the stealth or anything like that, correct? It's just.
Right-of-way.
It has nothing to do with the stealth?
Stealth technology or?
No, that's an internal decision and review being done by the staff.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let me craft it. Hmm? Let me craft it. No, it's right here, we got it. All right, on the, on the resolution twenty twenty-four dash eight, a motion to adopt which grants PPL the right-of-way access along the access road to the Verizon Monopole at Four Seasons Golf Course. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second? Second from the Chair, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. I mean, there's a similar motion for Verizon. Mrs. Switzer?
It, it's just.
Same thing, right?
Same thing, but Verizon itself needs to actually have the right-of-way.
Yeah.
To install the tower.
This will grant them the right-of-way access that they need, all right. Any questions from the board? None, questions from the audience, none. The Verizon antenna right-of-way, a motion to adopt resolution twenty, I'm sorry, zero nine, twenty twenty-four, which grants Verizon an antenna right-of-way for monopole installation at Four Seasons Golf Course. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. Motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Brubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay. Moving on to old business, we have her, Aher Park Phase Two grant paperwork has been filed. Anything to add on that, Mrs. Switzer, anything we need to do?
Nothing you need to do, there's no action needed. Just making the board aware that we did receive the application for the DCED funding, which will close the gap in the funding shortage that we had for that project. So once that is, documentation is signed, we can move forward with the project, which should take about four to five, six, four to six weeks to complete. Hopefully by end of summer.
And I appreciate you reaching out to the contractor, getting things lined up.
Yep, we have new pricing and everything's in line.
Not, not an action item?
No.
No.
Not until we have the grant agreement.
Any questions on the project from the board?
Yeah, the, the the installation is four to six weeks and I, and there's lead time before that, that starts.
There's, there's not much lead time, they're aware that, that we have funding for the project and they're going to make the schedule work as soon as we give them the go-ahead. We do have to sign the contract, which will be an action item of the board.
Okay, and that's the, the bocce courts and the parking lot and the second, well, two, the second and third pavilion, is that what's included in this?
The bocce, two bocce courts, which are under roof.
Mm-hmm.
The picnic pavilion and the parking facility.
Okay. Well, that's great.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's great, awesome.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a bigger deal than that, than just say. Yes, I mean, that's, that's good stuff out there, so.
Yeah, we were short four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and received the difference.
Yeah. We can get a little sober up here, a little levity and happiness and.
Good job.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm moving on to new business.
Um, excuse me.
Sure.
Yeah, one more old business. You know, two weeks ago, we had a lot of people in the room here talking about the library and as far as like next steps, you know, I had a, a conversation with John Hindley, but like, I'm not. I'm not really in the critical path of, of the next step, so we just talked about budgets and things like that, how the library operates. We talked about the eclipse, you know, we talked about yeah, well, essentially just the, the budgeting kind of things. And I just was curious, like, how, how will the community know and how will I know? Like what the next steps are and when progress will be made and that kind of thing.
Um, I also had, had coffee with Mr. Heinley as well. And just had some basic questions for him and for the library to consider. And he was going to, we left it that he would get back to me by the end of the month. So for me, that's where, where I'm at with, you know, hopefully we get some information from them back and something that, you know, maybe we can talk about and present, just really sort of feeling them out.
Yeah. And in the interest of full transparency, I had some email communication with Mr. Heinley also, and asked, and asked him for some information and asked him to get back as soon as he could, and I have not heard back at, at this point. So I would say we're having discussion with the library. Nothing definite at this point. We have sort of staked out where we are on this issue with the, with the motion that we put forth at our last meeting. So that's, that's how things stand here right now. But again, as I said, following the meeting, we're going to work to try to remedy this, this, this issue and, and resolve this situation to both our satisfaction.
I think maybe the answer to your question is, it sounds like Mr. Heinley has now reached out the three of the five board members, so. That's where they're kind of to sum it up real quick here.
Doing his, doing his job, probably.
And that's probably the, given that you can't, we can't all five meet with him at the same time, that's probably for short term going to be how it's going to operate. They're going, board members are probably going to meet with us individually and try and develop a consensus, I would imagine.
But, but again, no decisions will be made, no discussions will be had amongst board members, except here. But again, I think we're all hoping that we can work, work things out here satisfactorily.
Okay. Shall I bring this up as new business each meeting, or is that overkill, or just want to?
Well, if you have, if you have, if you have something that you want to bring up, you bring it up, sure, that's not overkill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. New business. As you can see in your packet here tonight, we have a new report provided by our finance department and Mrs. Switzer. It's a budget to actual report from January to March. It will be come, at least for this year, a regular report at the end of each quarter to give everyone an idea how we're doing from a budgetary standpoint. And with that, any questions from the board?
When does the earned income tax typically come in at this point now? Because we're, obviously our revenue's lower, which happens in the first couple of months.
It hasn't come in yet, of course, but it, it should happen begin, before May, for sure.
That's when, that's when we'll have a really a big bump up at that point.
Yes, as well as the real estate tax.
I mean, it seems, and we're not doing too bad for the first couple of months. The expenses to revenue are pretty much on par, the first couple of months are lean on revenue coming in.
Yes.
Do we have any outliers right now in the expenses that were kind of a surprise? I know you highlighted a couple on red.
Some of the percentages I'm kind of watching because they're a little high for where we are in, in the year, but generally speaking, no, we're, we're fine. I don't, I do want to continue to watch the building permit fees coming in and the expenses, expenses going out, because it's the first year that we're doing this with a third party. So there could be some discrepancies there. But yeah, overall, I think at three months, this is what you can expect to see.
Hey, as always, you guys are doing a good job of, of watching the, the dollars and cents for the township.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It does look like we got a payment in from Penn State Health on our.
We did.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Letter was sent, payment was made.
That's super. I did notice, and it's a little, a little niche, but computer maintenance in, in every category. We appear to be spending quite a bit, almost, almost close to all we've had budgeted for the year.
And a lot of that is the renewal of some of the programs.
Okay.
Comes once a year. So that won't continue. It'll, it'll slow down.
Just word falls.
Yeah.
And we've transferred three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Fire Services Fund. It looks like this, this quarter. Which is good. That's all I have. Anyone else, any comments about the report? Thank you very much. Next up on new business, we have this, any comment from the audience on the budget report? All right, next up, we have the Steinman Quarterly Report for the Blue Green Corridor Project.
This is just a report we get each quarter. He reviews exactly what has been transpiring with the Blue Green Corridor and how he is dealing with municipalities and their permitting process, as well as their eventual funding, which is at the end of the report. All right now, their grant funding committed is nine, almost ten million dollars. Their private and other sources on hand is two point one. Their budget is anticipated at twelve point, twelve million one, and they have pending applications of two point five million. So they're, they're well on their way to getting this project accomplished.
Another good environmental project for the township.
Yes.
Definitely. That's Mr. Schultz and his group, right?
Yes.
Yes, good, good. Okay. Moving down to the Bowman, April two thousand twenty-four summary of projects.
So this is a report, this is the second one. I'm going to be adding this to your agendas as we receive them. It's a report from our traffic engineer. He has quite a few projects that he is involved with. He goes over to review the truck study, which is basically complete with the exception of filing a report with PennDOT. He talks about Route seventy-two and Littit's Road. We are currently waiting a grant document contract for funding for that project. And as soon as that occurs, then he can move forward with the steps that he is waiting on regarding the PennDOT HOP and completing the, the design features of that project. We're hoping to get that accomplished. He says summer, I'm saying fall, but definitely in twenty twenty-four. Farmingdale Road, we discussed briefly at the Traffic Commission meeting, he does go onto his report here. He talks about the physical work is done. He would like to close out the HOP and the contractor, the contractor is owed money, which is the retainage. And we held that open to discuss the, the curve in the roadway. I believe the chairman is interested in adding that to the agenda at a future meeting to further discuss. But he reviews what his process is there, and I would encourage you to think about closing that contract out in the near future. He talks about Harrisburg and Hemlock and Harrisburg and Good, those two intersections. We are currently, we have applied for a green light go grant to upgrade the, both of those intersections signals, and we're working through that process. There's nothing needed by the township at this point in time, so that's all current. He talks about general land development, he talks about the two eighty-three commerce hub and the review process that is occurring behind the scenes on the traffic improvements at that intersection of Spooky Nook and Route two eighty-three, which will be a significant change to that area. He then talks and closes Township Capital Planning, the bridge capital plan, which was authorized by the board. He hopes to have that finished sometime in twenty twenty-four, which will give us a good figure of what bridge capital work we have to do and the costs involved. The traffic signal assessment also approved in twenty twenty-four, he hopes to have that finished in this spring or summer. That will give us an assessment of what our traffic signal intersections, the equipment within those intersections looks like and what needs improvement and what doesn't, to get them up to current standards. One of the active projects is the Dairy Road Bridge, that's a total replacement of that bridge. He is working through the design process, obtaining the necessary permits. We do have funding in place for that. There's one million dollars of CFA money and, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, CFA money and then multimodal money is three hundred thousand. And lastly, we have the Church Street Bridge, which is on Landisville Road. That bridge is deteriorating and we need to do something in the near future. And in terms of bridge work, that's within the next five or 10 years. The difficulty will be that that bridge does cross Amtrak, so that's going to be a whole another headache in itself. We are planning, we are staging, we are trying to look for, for monies to get that accomplished, because that will be a significant project when it happens. So I think that's good information, gives you a very good overview of what's occurring by our traffic engineer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience concerning this report? All right, seeing none, we'll move down to the next item, the Traffic Commission report for this evening. Number one, we discussed the closing of the HOP on Farmingdale Road. We're going to look to do that hopefully at, at our next board meeting prior to our next Traffic Commission meeting. That's the plan right now. We, we, we reviewed the current traffic safety studies in the township with the chief. And we discussed the reinstallation of speed bumps on Bar Boulevard, which we spoke about earlier this evening. Anything else from the traffic standpoint?
No.
Okay. Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, let's move to public comment. Any public comment this evening? I see no public comment. Let's move to the manager's report.
So the Centerville Road South project, of course, is being completed as we speak. It's, a project that's going to continue until September twenty twenty-five. Diane was at a construction meeting today, I don't believe there's anything really to add, it's, it's moving forward, there's no hiccups. It's just a major project and a major source of complaint for those people traveling through the corridor.
We're in good weather season, so they're out there doing as much as they can, as often as they can, so it will definitely be more impactful over the next several months because they're doing a lot of work trying to get it moving forward and stay on schedule.
Another roadway project is the Church Street Project, this is a PennDOT project. They are on the second phase of this. They should be milling the roadway probably the end of April and will probably be paving it the mid-May. So there will be impact on that roadway for travelers for the next couple of weeks. There won't be a need to close it, but they will have some, some traffic alterations. The school district is in full knowledge of what is happening out there, Diane's been keeping them informed. Old Warsd Round Road Project is on hold because of stream impacts, so that's on hold until the June first. We did talk about the Farmingdale Road and the widening of the curve. The Stony Battery Trail, I don't believe it's paved yet, but I know Public Works has been working on that trail to get that final leg completed near Kaufman.
Real quick question back on Farmingdale Road, the multimodal grant, did we drain that all the way down?
No, we totally drained the other one, the two hundred and one thousand.
So we still have some money left in that grant?
The multimodal, yes.
Yes.
Well, I'm having a difficult time working through PennDOT to give us any reimbursement, they wanted to wait until it was closed. So we have not drawn on that grant yet.
But there is, even if we send all our bills, is there going to be money left in the grant, or have we drawn it all the way down?
I'm going to have to look at that. Yeah.
Okay.
Can we back up to the Stony Battery Trail? I'd like to ring the bell on that one, it's one that I've wanted to see complete, and I know I've been a thorn in your side on that. I'm so glad to see it come to fruition, so.
Perry, do you have a date yet for paving?
There it is.
All right, Perry.
You. Uh, no, I do not have a direct date yet. We, we finished the entire trail today with stone. We are waiting to hear from our, our one paver. Depending on how quickly they can get to it, we have several other options for paving that, so it, it will be shortly. I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have it done by the beginning of May. Again, it's all dependent on their schedule, so.
Good news. Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
So the truck study signage project, the signage is in place. Police are working with our traffic engineer to finalize how we're going to manage the enforcement of that, that project. The zoning hearing board, second meeting for the Colebrook validity challenge will be tomorrow. That's a monthly meeting right now with the zoning hearing board. The Route seventy-two and Littit's Road temporary signals, we're waiting for paperwork on that, as was mentioned in the Bowman report. The Sod Farm farming, so Sporting, Sporting Valley turf has asked to get removed from their lease. Last meeting, we, the board gave me authorization to negotiate with Sporting Valley and also Don Stoner, this runs Stoner Farm. So Sporting Valley has agreed to an eight thousand dollar buyout of that lease. They will then release it over to the farmer on May first. And the farmer has agreed to a thousand dollars per year to give us, which is very similar to what we get from him for the Nissley Road Track farming. The AHR Phase Two. Again, we talked about that end of May, beginning of June is my, my hope on that one. We talked about the budget to actual, jumping down to the Stormwater Projects, the Gloucester Basin. We had an interesting thing happen to us, for us, West Hemfield Township, Andrew Stern reached out, reached out to me. He indicated that they have a Growing Greener Grant, it's Growing Greener, yes, Growing Greener Grant, that they did not spend all of the funds. So he had the great idea and he reached out to his engineer, she reached out to DEP. DEP has agreed to allow that money to transfer to East Hemfield Township, which will cover the Gloucester Basin Grant. It's about two hundred thousand, give or take.
That's outstanding.
I know, isn't it amazing?
Thank you, Andrew, for that one.
I know, he, we did. He wants a statue with his face and, you know.
We'll name that basin after him. We'll give him naming rights.
So we, we need to work out the logistics of that, that we just found that out today, but that's great news, we can now do both basins at the same time and, and get those, that water stopped where it kind of starts.
That'd be great.
Bad news or sad news, Harrisburg Pike Drainage, we had got, tried to get an SRBC grant for that, we found out today that that was not awarded, so we're still looking for funding for that project. That's all I have in my report, I'm sorry. Public safety, we did have a public safety working group meeting, fire, we, the Chief Kotmeyer discussed lower donations from the fund drive, which is a concern that we have to keep an eye out, it will impact, of course, their budget as well as the township budget as we assist them in, in getting through this slowdown. The police department, Chief Brubaker announced that the new administrative sergeant is Sergeant Henry. He will be replacing Sergeant Lombardo as he retires in probably January, February of next year. Chief Brubaker also then outlined her plans for staffing, we are budgeted at thirty-five, we currently have thirty-four officers. And what she'd like to do and explain to the group was to hire for three spots, the thirty-fifth officer plus the two retiring, there's another officer retiring beginning of next year. And the group agreed that it makes sense to move forward, to start that advertising, to see what kind of applicants we get. The budget, as I noted, the, the thirty-fifth officer is budgeted as a full year. So to hire three officers for half a year or less, if it's within the budget, it might if it's within the budget, it might be pretty close, depending upon, uh, healthcare benefits, what that comes out to, but we should be pretty close in terms of meeting our budget requirements. And she is also investigating the hiring grants involved with that, which there's, there's a couple out there that, uh, she can go after. EMS, uh, was mentioned that there was a slight dip in the response, but, uh, Diane indicated that since that time that those stats have climbed to, uh, appropriate levels. And lastly, the emergency management end of things. Diane, along with Chief Cotmire, have been doing projects with various businesses, such as the most recent, which was the exit door marking at Stir Foods. She also noted how well fire and police are working together on fire investigations between Cotmire and Officer Dillaplane. Officer Dillaplane has experience in, uh, fire investigations, so when there's a need for an enforcement component, Chief Cotmire and Officer Dillaplane work together, and that's going very well. She also noted that mutual aid with Manon Township is going well, to the extent that other departments are taking note that the fire departments in East Tenfield Township are reliable and professional. It concludes my report unless there's questions.
So for fire, can we put a lead article on our newsletter, put something on our website, put something on Facebook? Kind of do a little appeals, reminding people it's a volunteer organization and realize some fundraising, just to, just up the, uh, ante a little bit.
We can definitely put that out on social media. Our newsletter is not in the right cycle.
Uh, and, and I'd have to say for next, the future, just say.
It'd be a general thing we add to.
General front and center, just about needing for volunteers and need for donations, not for people to just, uh, put down the circular file and throw it out.
Yep.
Good idea. Okay. That brings us to the end of the, the meeting. Anything additional for the good of the cause here this evening? Anything from the audience? Patty?
Patty Clark, thirty-three, thirty-seven Cochran Drive. Cindy, with the manager's report, I just, could you just review again what's happening with the sod farm? I do understand that there was a, you know, the, um, the farmer that was there with the sod farm was supposed to had a, a certain term with his lease that he wanted to end early, so there's going to be kind of like a sublease going on with a different, a different, um, farmer, is that right? And is it the whole property that that's happening with or just part of it?
Sorry. So the, uh, the turf farm farmer has asked to be released from the lease, which has been negotiated, and the Stoner farmer is going to be farming twenty-eight acres of that tract of land. There's approximately nineteen acres currently in sod planted, and that will stay there. So the sod that's there now on the site closer to church and, and Noel, the corner, will stay. The field will be twenty-eight acres on the inner area of the tract. Do you have a graphic in the? Might help.
And as, as Diane is pulling that up, like, the, uh, the part that will remain in sod and turf, um, how will that be maintained?
That will have to be maintained by the township mowing.
Oh, okay.
That was the, the beauty of having the sod farm was they did the mowing for us.
Yes.
And so, and we got paid versus the cost of mowing.
And was, was there a reason for handling it that way instead of having the farmer manage the new, the new farmer from the whole area? Like, what was the reasoning behind the way things are, are laid out?
W- we didn't see the need to actually disrupt the, the current sod. It would be, uh, someplace for the residents that, in the neighborhood that typically use it, to continue to use it. Um, I mean, it could be go, certainly go the other way, that he could farm the whole thing. But it is currently planted in sod, which is prime grass.
Mm hmm. I just wondered why the, the current, uh, sod farmer didn't pull that up.
So they, they have to have, um, a need for it. They can't store it.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, and they purchased, um, this is no secret, they purchased a brand new facility where they can house everything at one location. Um, they have been a great, great partner for the township. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's sad to see them go, so. It, um, all the best to them, and again, they've been just an absolute phenomenal partner, neighbor. Um, they always went the extra mile.
Like, to your question about why, why only twenty-eight acres out of the, out of the fifty that's there, I guess, right?
Yeah, basically, what was the, what was the reasoning for the decision and, and breaking it up that way?
Well, I'm assuming he didn't want the whole, we, I'm not sure that we would have put a.
We didn't ask him, uh, what was planted in sod we knew would remain in, in that sod.
Right.
And some of it's actually fairly new towards the basin. So that would continue to grow. It just didn't seem to make sense to tear that sod and to plant.
May have had to do with the season, seasonality of the crop that he's going to put in.
Mm hmm.
The sod, the sod is there, um, uh, maybe he just didn't need the extra acreage. But it was nothing that we did to, to li- to limit him.
No.
And I would point out that, that it's, uh, uh, this, this is only being farmed on a temporary basis.
Mm hmm.
It's not, not a permanent, uh, situation for the, for the farmer.
And with it being a sod farm and the way it's been maintained over the years, it's going to very easily transition into a recreational facility, um, with the way it's laid out. So that, that grass that is remaining, that's less grass that township or whatever that occurs there is going to have to be planted, so. It's kind of a win-win right now. It's like, I think it's the best deal we can get with, with, uh, them pulling out and having a, a farmer come in, just farm at least half of it. That means that's half, but less than we got about.
So there, and there is, just so everybody knows, there's a difference between turf and grass seed. So that turf is very expensive. We would probably, as a township, never pay to have a field like that. Um, so we're very fortunate to have it, um, and I don't think if we were going to replace it, you know, it was a perfect storm. If we, if they've already harvested the other half of that field, it makes sense to plant it now. And rather than have him tear up the sod that we now have, there's no sense for him to tear up the sod that we now have. That's, that's prime.
Okay. And I, and I was, I was also kind of curious. I thought possibly some of the reasoning had to do with, um, you know, thinking that, I know that, that anybody interested in moving forward with some of the plans that were put forth, uh, for this area, uh, I thought maybe there wasn't, uh, an understanding that those seeking funding for the baseball field might be doing that sooner uh, than other folks looking for funding for the other half of the area, and I didn't know if that weighed in the, into the decision at all or not.
I'm not aware of the.
Not, not, not weighed into the decision. I mean, we've, we've made a decision that it's going to be a park and there's going to be baseball fields on it. Uh, we've got no indication from H Y A that they're any closer to any type of funding than they, than they were maybe six months ago. Um, but they are, they are looking for funding and, um, I'm quite sure that they would like to do something on the, on the field, um, as soon as they can, soon, as it's realistic. But not, there's nothing, nothing in the, in the hopper now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Bring us to the end of the meeting. Let's adjourn at eight oh five.
So let you know, just, I'm not, I haven't paid from the library yet, but I had a call yesterday from West Tenfield.